I call the regular council meeting. Sorry, I call the regular council meeting to order. Would Mr. Schaefer please lead us in pledge?
Please join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the American United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Check.
Oh, they are working.
Oh, my gosh.
There we go.
Next item.
Next, we have our video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Today's meeting replays on Monday, April 18th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Okay, next item, please.
Next, we have approval of agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Motion by Miller, second by Schaefer. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Bruins is absent. Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
All right, next item.
Next, we have presentation, item number four. It's proclamation honoring Meal Pro as a business of distinction.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Members of City Council, Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager. It is a best practice for the city of Citrus Heights to periodically honor a business of distinction. We have a fantastic diverse business community with lots of news to share, and this is a way for us to commemorate that news. And in particular, this evening, we are commemorating Meal Pro, a relatively new business to Citrus Heights that joined us in 2020. You'll hear more in the proclamation. We're celebrating because they recently doubled down on their investment in the Citrus Heights business community by purchasing their building. They are a meal prep service, which is an exciting emerging industry cluster for our city and a fantastic diversification for our business community. So I would like to introduce you to founder and CEO Andy Sartori, if you can come up and join me, and Vice Mayor Schaefer. I will turn it over to you to read the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Megan. I really appreciate it. Congratulations very much, all. So the proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights recognizing Meal Pro as a business of distinction in the Citrus Heights community, whereas in the Citrus Heights is home to 2,262 businesses and over 30,000 jobs, and whereas Citrus Heights takes pride in being home to a majority of small business, some small businesses within, with over 60% of the businesses having fewer than 10 employees, and whereas Meal Pro is a meal preparation service founded in 2018, which specializes in healthy meals made with natural ingredients, and whereas Meal Pro expanded their business in Citrus Heights community in 2020 by leasing their, their current building at 7433 Greenback Lane, and whereas in 2000, I'm sorry, March 2022, Meal Pro achieved a primary goal of by purchasing their building in, on Greenback Lane. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Whereas the expansion allows Meal Pro to double their current operation from 4,000 square feet to 11,000 square feet, and whereas Meal Pro is the first small business of its kind in Citrus Heights community, and with the future plans to grow and expand operations, and whereas Meal Pro embodies the Citrus Heights motto, solid roots, new growth. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Citrus Heights, sorry, the city council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize Meal Pro for their investment and their dedication to Citrus Heights, the Citrus Heights business community, and extends best wishes and future endeavors. And witness herof, we set forth a hand and seal, 14th day of April, 2022, signed, Mayor Portia Middleton. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody. And I would like to thank Megan Huber, city leadership, and this distinguished council for recognizing me and Meal Pro as a distinguished business. Just two years since we set up in Citrus Heights, this is a great honor that rewards the daily efforts and hard work of my team here at Meal Pro. It was a long journey to come here, a journey that took me from a food truck in Silicon Valley to a trendy neighborhood in Old Roseville, to an industrial facility in Sacramento, and finally to a former casino around the corner. What drew me here? A business-friendly attitude, a location that streamlines our supply chain, and a great workforce. As the founder of Nike, Phil Knight once said, entrepreneurs always walk on the edge of a precipice. I just made my walk a little more exciting by expanding our operation here in Citrus Heights. As we continue to invest in order to broaden our national customer base with healthy and affordable ready-to-eat meals, we have also recently expanded to give local residents the opportunity to purchase meals for medical conditions, such as for renal failure, diabetes, Crohn's, and many more. So just a big thank you to the city of Citrus Heights for making things happen, and I always recommend to my friends in Silicon Valley to move to Citrus Heights. Very good.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Oh, thank you.
Great, thank you. There you go.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just real quick say something regarding this. I, I just want to highly, highly commend you for your courage to do what you've done during a very difficult time, and then to, to show incredible courage by expansion and stuff like that. And I tremendously appreciate your commitment to Citrus Heights and what you guys do over there, and can't wait for you to go to your next bigger building. So thank you.
I think that will be a Citrus Heights whole.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect. So our next three proclamations will be done from the dais, and then we will present them to our police department. Mr. Daniels, you're up next.
Did you want to announce it, what it is?
Of course. So we have item number five, a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 10th through 16th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Thank you. Tonight, we are honored to recognize April 10th through the 16th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. This time is dedicated to celebrating and honoring dispatch staff who help others during some of the most difficult times. I really want to commend our telecommunications staff for their continued outstanding work and support for the Citrus Heights community. I would now like to read a proclamation we have prepared, and after that, I will invite our PD staff to share some words. Proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 10th through 16th to 2022 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur anytime that require police, fire, or emergency medical services in the city of Citrus Heights, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of our law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who contact the Citrus Heights Police Department Communications Center, and whereas our 911 operators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas our communications professionals are the single vital link for first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas our public safety telecommunications of the Citrus Heights Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Citrus Heights declares the week of April 10th through 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And it's signed by the Mayor Portia Middleton. And I just want to make a side note that in 20 years of law enforcement, I responded to 20,000 calls for service, all of them involved dispatchers, and the hardest job in law enforcement in public safety is being a dispatcher. And they save law enforcement, police officers' lives by providing accurate information. And on the other end, if you're talking to one, please remember they know what they're doing, and they may be asking you questions that you don't quite understand why they might be asking, and you might think that they're wasting time and getting somebody out there. They've already had somebody dispatched by the time they're done talking to you. They're still just gathering information. So they are really the true, true heroes of public safety, and thank one if you get a chance to. And then we're going to call some people up later or right now?
Right now, in between. So if there's anyone from the PD staff that would like to make a few comments.
I have Communication Supervisor Nikki Bell and Sheila Cotrell.
Come on up.
She's in the back. Well, good evening, Mayor Middleton, Vice Mayor Schaefer, Members of the Council, City Manager Feeny, and Chief Turcot. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity tonight. Our names are Telecotrell, this is my partner Nikki Bell, Word to the Communications Supervisors here at the Citrus Heights Police Department. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week does fall on April 10th through 16th of this year, and we did want to note that they were, that dispatchers were newly reclassified at the state level as first responders as of 2020. We thank the council for giving the Citrus Heights Police Dispatch Team recognition through this proclamation. In addition, we'd like to share that yesterday, Chief Turcot announced this year's Dispatcher of the Year is our dispatcher Sarah, so congratulations to her. During 2021. And just some quick facts. During 2021, the CHPD Dispatch Team fielded 114,792 calls for service. That included 36,117 911 calls. Your 24/7 Communication Center is staffed by a team of 20 professionals who provide this critical link between citizens and emergency services. They average 300 to 400 calls for service per day, which means that each dispatcher averages 50 to 70 calls per shift, where they must determine where the emergency is happening, what resources are needed, document this information perfectly, all while keeping the caller focused and calm. Additionally, they deploy the police officers via the radio based on exigency, providing them vital information and ensuring their safety. The dispatch team has a marked contribution to the operation of criminals, and we thank you for the recognition of this dedicated team.
Next, we have item number six, a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 10th through 16th National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week.
Great, and I think I got this one because I was cited recently by animal control for having my dogs off the leash in my front yard. And they've been leashed ever since, I promised, but for community service, I will gladly read this. Every second week of April is recognized as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. This is time for us to be thankful and recognize the great work that our animal control officers and personnel perform each day in our community. We want to recognize and thank our animal care and control staff for your great service and the care you provide to our community pets. I would now like to read a proclamation we have prepared, and after I do, I invite our PD staff to share some words. Okay, I'm going to skip the whereas's. I'll say the first one. Whereas, animal services officers provide essential community functions, including the enforcement of animal control laws, protecting the public from diseases such as rabies, and educating the public on the proper care of our community's pets. Our animal services officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving the quality of life for the residents and animals. Our officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing animal abuse and neglect, keeping the public safe from dangerous animals, rescuing injured animals, reuniting lost animals with owners, and abating neighborhood nuisance issues. Animal Services is an extremely busy unit, but continues to assist and provide tremendous service to our community, including handling over 3,400 calls for services in 2021, intake processing of 495 animals, adopting out 488 animals, and reuniting 102 animals with their owners and families. Animal Services Officers often have a highly visible role in the communities, and they serve and regularly interact with the public and enforce a variety of federal, state, county, and local laws in their capacity. The city of Citrus Heights wants to recognize and honor the animal services officers in our community and acknowledge their commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. So now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim April 10th through 16th as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. And I do hereby urge all Citrus Heights community members to join in recognizing expressing their appreciation for the service and dedication of our animal services officers. And this was signed by our Mayor Portia Middleton on the 14th day of April, 2022. Thank you. Would our police services supervisor, Deborah Nathan, or someone want to say something? You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Vice Mayor Schaefer, City Manager, Chief. My name is Deborah Nathan. I am the Police Services Supervisor, and I oversee code enforcement, rental housing, and animal services. This is Officer Seth Palmer Tree. I'm sorry, the other officers weren't able to attend, but what I would like to say is I just joined the team as a supervisor about five, six weeks ago. I'm so impressed and so honored to be leading a team with such incredible, hardworking, and compassionate officers that do so much for the community in reuniting animals, saving animals, taking strays off, off the streets, and it is just really an honor to have them recognized this week. So I just want to say thank you so much for honoring the officers and the hard work they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have item number seven, a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 17th through 23rd as National Volunteer Week.
Okay. National Volunteer Week traditionally occurs the third week of April. This is a time for us to recognize the great work that our police department volunteers provide each of us in our, in our community. We want to recognize and thank our volunteers for their continued service and dedication. I'll read the proclamation we have prepared, and after that, I invite PD staff to say a few words. Whereas during this week, all over the nation, we recognize the millions of volunteers who strengthen, enrich, and improve our community through their tireless and selfless commitment to serving others. And volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations and volunteer centers. Individuals and communities at, are at the center of social change, discovering the power to make a difference. During this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed, and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. The giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. Experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's problems. We so, we honor our outstanding volunteers who provide over 6,000 hours of dedicated service to the city of Citrus Heights and the Citrus Heights Police Department. The service provided by volunteers is integral to the prosperity of the Citrus Heights community. Now therefore be resolved that the city of city, the city council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim April 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as National Volunteer Week. As we celebrate and extend our sincere gratitude to all volunteers who serve, it witness thereof, signed with my hand, this 14th day of April, 2022. Give me like 45 seconds to quickly sign these proclamations because your mayor wasn't doing her job. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Vice Mayor Schaefer, Members of the Council, City Manager Feeny. On behalf of Chief Turcot and Manager Campbell, and the entire Citrus Heights Police Department, we would like to recognize all of our volunteers and extend our sincere gratitude for their commitment and dedication to our department and the Citrus Heights community we serve. The commitment shown by our volunteer team each and every day is nothing short of extraordinary, and their service is integral to the prosperity of the Citrus Heights community. We honor all of our volunteers who, as you mentioned, served over 6,000 hours to our community. Volunteers are embedded throughout our entire department and positively impact everyone with whom they serve. Their selfless acts of service help to support our mission and better serve those we are sworn to protect. We recognize the giving of oneself in service to another empowers both the giver and the recipient. We proudly stand alongside the men and women of this team in recognition of National Volunteer Week and sincerely thank them for all they do. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Alex Turcot, your police chief. Wanted just to say thank you very much for the support that you show the police department, and wanted to note today, while it seems like April is Thank the Police Month, really what you see up here, we're all professional staff folks. A lot of times we'll talk about our police officers or, you know, the folks that are out there fighting crime out in the field, but really what you see here is our professional staff support, and also the leadership that you don't usually get to see behind the scenes with our professional staff supervisors, who much to their chagrin, got to be in the spotlight in front of council today. But it really is the team effort of the combination of our sworn and professional staff that really, really get the job done, and including our volunteers who are supervised by professional staff. Really, it shows the teamwork that only we have internally within the department, but externally through the whole community. So thank you very much for your support with that and carving out this much time to appreciate all the weeks that are happening here for the police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If the PD staff will join us up here at the podium, please? Thank you. Come on, come on, come on. Volunteers, too.
Hey, friends, I know y'all just got situated. Can I ask you to come in front of the podium? Thank you. I just want to see all your beautiful faces. Recreate what you were just doing because it was great. Wish in. We're all friends.
Vice Mayor, I need you to position yourself in a way that makes sense, sir.
I'm talking about standing, it's not about me.
Stand by the chief. There we go.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, okay. There we go. Okay, and voter-ready faces. Everybody looks great.
You got three we jump.
Okay. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, now that all the fun stuff's over, down to business. Next item.
Next, we have comments by councilmembers and regional board updates, and I would like to note that Councilmember Bruins has joined us.
Wonderful. Let's start with Mr. Daniels.
Sure, thank you very much. Little bit stuff going on. On March 28th, I attended the fire two by two with the mayor. Not a whole lot of stuff from that, other than unfortunately, structure fires and vegetation fires were pretty significant year to year. So just be careful. I mean, they've been in the news lately, too. Real recently with some, some real tragedies. So be careful, look for ways to hopefully prevent that, and, and then hopefully those numbers will be reduced. The only other issue on that meeting was the, the word impact fee kind of came up, and that kind of concerns me, but we'll see where that goes. After that, on Thursday, March 31st, I had coffee with the chamber president, what'd he be? Ray Ward? I believe we, we would refer to him as a chamber president. Very nice man. If you haven't had a chance to reach out and, and meet the chamber president, I, Chamber of Commerce President, I would suggest you do. The chamber is critical to Citrus Heights businesses and success, so very, very important man. I then came to know that on April 1st, we, the world was celebrating Sergeant Samino's birthday, and finding out that he was born on April 1st, it all kind of makes sense now. So happy birthday to him, and appreciate everything you do. On April 7th, I attended along with Councilmember Miller, I believe, and I think that was it, right, on, as far as us? The, a, a little get together over at Mesa Verde High School regarding the development of their sports complex, is the way we'll put it. New football field, new track, softball fields, and all that kind of stuff associated with it. So we're going to see a significant change at Mesa Verde High School, and after 47 years, they deserve it, and it'll be something very nice for that school, for those kids, and everything that's going over, going on over there. And then on April 8th, I had the privilege to attend a baseball game at Mesa Verde High School and, and watch the kids play their hearts out and stuff like that. If you get a chance, you know, if you don't have anything going on, maybe around 4 o'clock on a certain day, check and see. We have Mesa Verde and San Juan High School that are playing baseball games and other sports, but it would be nice to see people get out and support the kids. And for the future, I think, oh, I'm sorry, on the 12th, a couple days ago, had a lot of fun attending the Commerce, Chamber of Commerce lunch and watching the new city manager get grilled, and he actually did a very excellent job. Very nice, fun meeting, and good to see everybody there, and, but just, you did a good job. Good job, definitely. On Saturday, coming up this Saturday, the Kiwanis are doing an Easter egg hunt from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Rush Park, if you want to take the kiddos out there. And then as far as I just mentioned, baseball, on Tuesday, the 19th, we'll have the, the big city battle. Mesa Verde will play San Juan in baseball, and I think it's at Mesa Verde, I'm not 100% sure, but be great to see some people out there. And then, of course, Sunday, the 17th is Easter, wishing everybody a very happy Easter, and he has risen. Thank you.
Thank you. You are very busy, Mr. Daniels. All right, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, attended, well, then I attended a virtual meeting, the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting, and one of the major topics of discussion is there's a citizens group that's gathering signatures for initiative, and it's not going to be much different than Measure A that was put forth by the SDA Board. No, they were going to do it two years ago, decided not to do it, and now some citizens have picked it up, and so we're discussing some of the legal issues with the language and making sure that it was doable. Won't get into much more details than that. Let's see. Monday, we had the Regional Transit District Meeting, and a major topic of discussion Monday night was a possible lease to the city of Sacramento of the Roseville Road parking lot for a homeless in shelter, so to speak. I think it'd be fenced off and for folks that are living out I think it'd be fenced off and for folks that are living out of their cars. But there's a number of sticking points with that. So, I'm not sure if that's going to move forward. It's just, it's odd that you go to a, a meeting with Regional Transit to talk about buses and light rail and the topic is homeless. It kind of permeates all our discussions. Yeah, there was a fun lunch, a chamber lunch on Tuesday. And also on Tuesday, went to the ribbon cutting for the Surgery Center here at the Corner Stock Ranch Road. And is that Sylvan there or? I think so, it's still Sylvan. Beautiful facility. I kind of bought flashbacks when I saw the surgery rooms, I didn't want to go in there. Other than that, just fantastic. So, it's great to have another medical facility in, in our city. I think the medical office building is, is really helping in encouraging these type of businesses to, especially healthcare, that's something we've been lacking come to Citrus Heights. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, Ms. Bruins. Does she have access to?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Just waiting for a response. So, thank you for accommodating me tonight. I had to be in two places at the same time. So, I'm here remotely. I'm sorry I missed the police presentation, couldn't be there with you, but congratulations to you all. Attended some of the same meetings that the other council members have attended. I've got to give kudos to the chamber for doing a, kind of like a fireside chat with our city manager. It brought out some elements of his personalities, which were, which were a lot of fun. And so, that was a really nice luncheon. And just to dovetail on what Steve said about the Surgery Center, it's a huge amenity to our community, can provide services that we've never had in Citrus Heights before. And it was a, a great celebration to see and I was glad that I was able to attend. We had a sanitation board meeting yesterday and we had just some normal business, nothing really substantial to report from that. We had a PAL board meeting yesterday and we are gearing up for our, I'm going to call it reverse Easter egg hunt, where we go out Saturday night and we actually plant Easter eggs in the, in the yards of homes that have signed up for that. Very excited about that. And then the, the kids will be even more excited Easter morning when they wake up and they have, have that surprise. And so, PAL continues to move into the summer planning, was always an exciting and busy time for us. So, I've, I've reported on those things the last couple of meetings, so won't bring them up again. And just want to say, yes, this Sunday is Easter and he has risen indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I've actually been quite busy traveling for my day job lately, so. And I'm delighted to say that the library board meeting is now, it's sort of offset. It was, for the longest time, coincided with the city council days. And this month, it is, we have the library board meeting next Thursday. So, from that standpoint, that's kind of a delightful thing because it made, Thursday's pretty crazy for me. But other than that, no, no meetings to, another meetings to report, but I do want to wish everyone a very happy Easter.
Well, my colleagues and I have all been pretty much at the same place at the same time, from the chamber luncheon, the ribbon cutting and at the Surgical Center. I also got to see our city manager briefly have a few words at the Kiwanis meeting for the Citrus Heights Kiwanis. I was told that he got grilled very, very hard about development and he held his own, so we're really excited to hear about that. SECOG Board Retreat was one of my big highlights and took up a lot of my time this past week. And we just discussed regional planning, what are we going to do about federal funding? There's opportunities for our city to engage with SECOG to find out the best way to apply for federal grants and things. And we know we need some transportation funding and we need some road repairs. So, I know that we are all working really hard to get that, you know, on track. And that is pretty much it. Oh, I should also say that my husband and I celebrated on April twelfth our fourteen years of marriage. I can't believe it's been that long. I'm pretty sure I'm old now. Thank you. Okay, and let's go to the next item.
Next item, we have public comment. Members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please either complete a speaker identification sheet and give it to the city clerk. If you are participating via Zoom, you can use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone and speak. And we did receive two identification sheets and currently I have no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. Our first speaker will be Debbie Woolley, followed by Nikki McNally. Thank you, welcome.
Hey, thank you. Is this going to continue?
You didn't get much time to talk.
It's a warning. Okay, now that my adrenaline is rushing. Hi, my name is Debbie. I've lived in the city for thirty-three years. I want to, I'm going to go off my script and just thank you for your support of our recent Constitutional Sheriff and Police Officers Association meeting. It was a tremendous success. And we're now trying to get all of the counties in California to be sponsoring the Constitutional Sheriff and Police Officer Association and the Posse. So, thank you for sending the people to come to that. I am here tonight to thank you, Citrus Heights City Council, for passing the Individual Choice Resolution last year.
Jeannie, could you mute, please? Thank you.
Reassuring, I would like to thank you for passing the Individual Choice Resolution, reassuring the city residents and the employees that you have zero intention of pushing a vax mandate. Thank you for being a medical freedom supportive board. You are the only one in the county. And others are whispering about it. But I'm very proud of us and I'm very proud to be in Citrus Heights. I want you to know about eleven very bad bills that are currently moving through the Assembly and the Senate at the state legislature. I've given you a list and call to action. I'm actually asking you to email the state legislature's committees and write a petition letter to oppose these eleven aggressive and divisive bills. There's ten on the list that I gave you, but there's an eleventh, AB twenty-two, twenty-three, that I just learned about, which would legalize infanticide. It would allow the mother to have the baby killed up to seven days old due to her mental health. And I am just extremely disturbed that anyone would propose a bill like this, let alone support it. The second thing that I would like to bring to your attention is Senate Bill fourteen sixty-four, which would defend all law enforcement if they do not enforce the medical mandates. I'd also like to underscore SB eight seventy-one, SB fourteen seventy-nine and AB nineteen ninety-three. These are the ones we'd really like you to weigh in on. Nineteen ninety-three, WIC's office has said that even though they have said that they're pulling that one about having every employee be receiving the jab or no job, they are still talking with unions to see if there's any language that they would support. So, it's not dead. So, I would like you to do that. These bad bills are repugnant to the United States Constitution. They're repugnant to the California Constitution. If you would remind them that they took an oath to uphold the Constitution, giving us individual rights, giving us the right to life, liberty, property. I'm really asking you to write these very quickly. These are moving through the committees. It seems like once these legislative bills pass the committee, they've kind of already been decided and they're just taking a vote on the floor. There will be a, there will be a rally Tuesday. I have six seconds left. There will be a rally on Tuesday for the AB twenty-two, twenty-three. And we'll be there at nine in the morning until five o'clock at night to ask for an intervention on this infanticide bill. It's just lighten up everybody's heart, their empathy. This is just wrong. And so, I'm asking for your heartfelt endorsement of supporting our citizens, our residents, our employees, our schools, our children. These are so aggressive and divisive and I'm thanking you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello, city council and peace oath takers, gratefully funded. My name is Nikki and I am here tonight to, to remind everyone that June seventh is election day for the primaries. We, we are encouraging all people to vote in person. And to remind everybody that it is still their constitutional right to vote in person, your friends and your family, please remind them. Although the governor and secretary of state are falsely trying to get you to believe that California is now an all by vote, mail. Primary election, June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any raised hands?
I have no raised hands on Zoom.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, we have consent calendar, items eight, nine, ten and eleven.
Pull eleven for a separate vote, please.
Mayor, can we pull ten? I have questions.
Okay, we'll pull, pull ten and eleven. Can we move them to the end of our agenda?
Of course.
Thank you.
I'll move the remainder, was there?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine?
Eight and nine, yes.
Eight and nine. Yeah, move eight and nine.
All right. Motion by Daniels.
I second.
Second by Schaefer. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next, we have regular calendar, item number twelve. Subject is approval of the Sunrise Marketplace Property Base Improvement District twenty twenty-one annual report. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the Sunrise Marketplace twenty twenty-one annual report.
Welcome, Kathy Lynn.
Mayor, council members, it's lovely to be here in person, I have to say, and see all your lovely faces. So, the report was distributed previously, so I won't go through it. I don't have a PowerPoint or anything, but I did want to make just a few comments, if you mind, if you don't mind.
Could you introduce yourself, ma'am?
Oh, introduce myself?
For the folks that don't know.
No, you're right, obviously, nobody knows who I am.
Our big audience might not.
I know, no, nobody knows. Kathy Lynn Carpenter, Executive Director for twenty-three years at the Sunrise Marketplace. Anyway, so just a few comments. Probably our biggest accomplishment in twenty twenty-one was that we did renew the P bid. So, obviously, that was what most of our effort went into. Unfortunately, we will be in renewal in fall of next year. So, we will have to put in that effort again next year. And of course, we are hoping for, we are hoping the city will approve a longer term this go-around. It's very expensive to renew the bid. It's a great effort. We can't do much else besides work on renewal. So, we do hope that we'll, we'll be able to have a longer term next time around. With the pandemic, we did not do a lot of events in twenty twenty-one. We did our normal marketing, you know, social media and, and a lot of giveaways. We focused a lot on helping our businesses through COVID. We did get a grant from the county of about twenty thousand dollars. So, we were able to provide signage, help them facilitate their outdoor dining, that type of thing. Really, any, whatever they needed. And then we kind of saw ourselves transition. This was really a first for us in twenty-two years, or twenty at that point, or I guess twenty-one at that point, transitioned to more of a clean and safe bid, which we really have never been. We really have never spent any money on security and maintenance. But with COVID, we did see some issues surface. And, you know, the, the police understandably did have some bandwidth issues. So, we did step up, contract with the police department for an officer for the bid. And that's been really successful. I have to say, it's been just a great partnership. The police department has been great to work with. The leadership team there is excellent. I would like to commend our officer, Officer Jeff Shoutin, who has done an outstanding job. It isn't a job for everyone, you know, to be in that area and patrolling that one area and being, you know, responsive to businesses and going in and introducing yourself and dealing with those specific problems. And he really just does an excellent job. To supplement that, we, we also contract for private armed security. And they patrol Monday, excuse me, Saturday, Sunday and Monday on the days that Officer Shoutin is not working. So, obviously, there's a lot of benefits to having our officer in the district. And we saw that last night. All of you saw the apartment fire. Officer Shoutin called me, you know, right away. He was, they were the first on the scene. It was very upsetting, obviously, for Officer Shoutin and Officer De Silva, our private security. As you know, they were able to save some animals, but the family that's apartment was on fire did lose everything and they did lose two dogs. So, it was a very difficult situation for them. So, they handled it very well and I just want to commend them for being right there and being able to, you know, be first on the scene. Sergeant Semino and I are working together to reach out to the family and make sure they know that Citrus Heights Heart can provide clothing and other resources, rent, deposit, as you know, which I'm sure they'll need to get restarted. So, we're hoping that they are able to reach out to us and we can help them. We would also like to provide a cremation for the two animals. You know, when you lose an animal that quickly, it can be nice to have a little memorial to have and, you know, take home with you. So, we are hoping that we can reach out and do some of those things. We also, this year, noticed with some of our vacant buildings that we were seeing an uptick in some property damage, vandalism. I know it's a big topic for everyone. So, we did contract with a daily porter service. And this, of course, also is very new for us and it's citywide services. And they clean graffiti, pick up mattresses and other things that are dumped. And if I could just say, and I'm not saying it's Citrus Heights residents, it could be anyone. But I, I really want people to understand that when you dump your mattress or your washer and dryer or your sofa, we've picked up entire windshields, someone dropped a bath off. And the homeless are very creative, so we had a little day spa going behind Breakmasters. You know, engine blocks, I, I just can't even tell you the kind of things. Now, we're taking care of that now, but we can't do it all. And it is a large cost for a business to fix broken windows, you know. But even these dumped items that we then have to take to the dump, you know, it's, it's expensive. So, we just would ask to be good neighbors with your businesses and not put that cost on them. It's not that expensive to take it out to the dump. So, that's just my little plea there. When I get it, because we did just start in March, I'll provide the board and council with reports from citywide. There'll be before-after pictures, data, how many bags of trash, how much graffiti, how many items were picked up, so we can kind of have good tangible data to show you guys. So, I mentioned Citrus Heights Heart. I think a lot of people don't, what they don't recognize about us is we're really involved in the community and we support many organizations in the community. We're probably Heart's largest benefactor, but we support- Um, but we support the Food Bank, Rotary, the Chamber, um, PALS, many, many organizations. And we are happy to do that. I know that the council and Mr. Feeney, um, we'll be talking about homeless and the issues of homeless. And I know you all get a lot of questions and phone calls, and I do too. I get many emails and concerns. And I, I would like to just say that people ask me, what, what can be done? What can we do? I would say, just to start, volunteer. Citrus Heights Heart is always in need of volunteers. We run a store in the mall, as you know, to provide free clothing to students and their families. We had many Afghan refugee families come through, um, dozens of them. I suspect we'll have many Ukrainian family refugees coming through. Um, but we need staff. We could, it's open two days a week. It could be open more, but we just don't have staff to run it more than two days. Um, obviously, we do winter shelter and many other programs. We always need volunteers. So, um, help us, you know, volunteer, donate. Um, we have shifted, Citrus Heights Heart has shifted its efforts really toward prevention of homelessness. Um, we have a rental assistance program. We got a grant from the county for that last year, and we got another one this year. Um, and we help with rent. If there's a catastrophic situation, once someone is homeless, then it's very difficult. So keeping them in their homes has become a priority for us. Um, uh, so donate, volunteer. Um, you'll feel better and you'll feel like you are doing something about the situation. Um, on Saturday, we will be doing a donation drive for, uh, Ukrainian support. Um, we're looking specifically for tactical gear and protective wear for, um, civilians, uh, who are caught in the crossfire there. So that Saturday, we'll be at Marketplace at Birdcage in front of the old Men's Warehouse. I hope you will have time to come by. Uh, the other thing, one of the major things we talked about that we wanted to focus on was art. Public art in the district. You know, we wrapped the mural, uh, the utility boxes with murals. Um, we'll be rolling out some more of those this year. We worked with Wide Open Walls, uh, for a mural at Marketplace at Birdcage. Uh, this year, Wide Open Walls moved from September to May. So it'll be taking place, um, from May 1st to May 22nd. And, uh, again, we're working with them to do some satellite murals here in Citrus Heights. Uh, we'll be doing, um, I believe, two to three at Marketplace at Birdcage and one at the PetSmart Building. And that, and, and I suggested that wall because it gets a lot of graffiti because it is the, uh, entryway to the trailhead. So we do see a lot of graffiti there. Um, and I think the mural will do a good job of mitigating that. Um, I can't drive what the artwork is going to be, but I have suggested it. I'm hopeful that maybe it's something about hiking and nature and would be a really nice entryway to what I think is a wonderful amenity in, in the city, that trail. It's just, it's a really great amenity, and so I think we can introduce it in that way. It would be really nice. Um, and there'll be a mural event at Marketplace at Birdcage on May 22nd. And I believe they will be painting a mural during that event. Um, so that'll, that'll be interesting to see, too. And we're gonna, we're doing more events this year. We're gonna do our big signature Brews in the Burbs on May 21st. So encourage you to come out for that. It's a lot of fun. We anticipate about 1,000 people. Proceeds for that event will benefit the Citrus Heights Chamber and Citrus Heights Heart. And we have a lot of fun stuff out there, games, axe throwing, obviously, beer and wine, um, food trucks, live band. So it'd be pretty fun. We're working with the Chamber on a rib cook-off on September 17th. And, uh, the Heart spaghetti feed is September 23rd. And we'll be doing Magical Moments again, uh, this December, including a big laser light show at Lowe's, which we were, had been doing, obviously, before the pandemic. Um, the only other thing that we're keeping our eye on, I really was just made, made aware of is AB 2890. And this is a, a bill, uh, to, uh, update the existing P bid enabling legislation where, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but the bill require, the law requires that we separate general versus special benefit. In other words, is there anything we do that maybe just benefits someone who isn't in the district and doesn't pay the assessment? Right? But there was never any guidelines given on what that was. We always struggled, like, well, what is that? You know, is it someone enjoys the mural or, you know, is it? I mean, like, what is it? And we never could get any guidance, and this bill clears that up and gives clearer guidance. So it's a good thing, and we're, we're looking forward to some better, because there have been several lawsuits, uh, against P bids, uh, on that. And this will mitigate those lawsuits as well. And I think that's all, unless you have any questions?
No, just a quick comment. I'm really excited about Brews and, Brews and the Burbs. I already have my VIP tickets.
I saw. Thank you.
Um, but I'm not sure about axe throwing wine and beer. That sounds like a, um, are we gonna have some extra PD staff out there? Because, uh, it sounds kind of dangerous.
It's like in a trailer. Like, they're not, you're not just, like, out there throwing axes around. And we will have security on site. And, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, thank you, Kathy, for what you do. You know, you have, um, uh, made Citrus Heights a success based on what you've done with the marketplace. And we would not be where we are today in the position we are financially, uh, without you. And you're a real star for Citrus Heights. And, um, I want to really thank you for staying as long as you have. Um, to put that in perspective, you've outlasted 10 principals at San Juan High School.
That's not funny. No.
Well, I'm too, I'm, I'm too old to leave.
I'm just trying to make the point that, um, longevity also brings with it that institutional knowledge that creates success. And, uh, what you've done for us, uh, there has, uh, has really made a big difference. And, uh, I just thank you very much.
Thank you. And we really appreciate our partnership with the city. It's very, very important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick comment. Kathy, I just.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Want to say that, um, I wish I could, uh, say, have said this as eloquently as Councilmember Daniels do, but I can't tell you that. Very much appreciated all the hard work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other comments, what is the desire of the council?
Does this require a motion?
If, my notes say it requires a motion, but, yeah.
I move the item.
Second.
Motion by Daniels, second by Miller. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next, we have item number 13. The subject is first reading of fireworks regulation and enforcement ordinance. And staff recommendation is to introduce for a first reading and read by title only an ordinance of the city of Citrus Heights, amending chapter 38 of the Citrus Heights Code relating to fireworks.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Vice Mayor Schaefer, members of City Council. My name is Nikki Garing. I'm one of your police lieutenants. It's nice to see everybody here in person tonight. Um, as you recall, uh, last year, we worked on an urgency ordinance for social host and some fireworks, uh, ordinance. Um, and this year, we're asking, um, to have a presentation and move from an urgency ordinance to a permanent ordinance. But we're going to be focusing on the same, uh, the same changes we had or same adoptions we had in last year's ordinance. So this ordinance would adopt the same provisions, including, um, the urgency ordinance approved by council on June 24th of 2021. The provisions are for social host, which is hosting of illegal fireworks and recipient of a, uh, $750 fine. And with subsequent offenses, it would be a $1,000 fine as well as a cost recovery for any subsequent responses or emergency response. The time of use is that, um, no fireworks, whether legal or illegal, will be used between 11:00 PM and 9:00 AM. And then lastly, we're going to require documentation of the fireworks ordinance be posted on the, uh, fireworks stands. So that's our, our focus. It's the same as last year, but now making it permanent. But I'm going to turn this over to, uh, City Attorney Ryan Jones.
Yes, thank you, Lieutenant Garing. And as a, as a regular permanent ordinance, we're looking for a, a first and second reading. The, the goal is that the urgency ordinance expires on June 23rd of this year. And so we'd like to ideally have continuity. And as that, before that one expires, this one would take on it, and the terms would be the same. So we asked the council to make a motion tonight to have the first reading, read by title only, and set it for a second reading at the next, uh, regular meeting. If there's any questions, Lieutenant, I are happy to answer them.
Have a question.
Go ahead.
So I'm just looking for the, the spot in the, uh, in the ordinance here. Um, what is the, uh, timeframe between the first violation and the second violation? Is that in the same calendar year? Is that within five years? Is that forever? What does that look like?
We didn't set a, a timeframe, so I think it goes on indefinitely. So if you violated it one year into the next, you would, that would be two violations, even if it's a year or, let's say, five years in apart.
Great. Thank you.
What if they were cited and then another call came in same day?
I think that's two violations.
There you go.
Yep. Or it could be three, right? All depends. Yes.
Can you go back to the first page? The fine of 750 and the subsequent 1,000, is that just for the illegal fireworks? Uh, or what is the, um, enforcement mechanism for the time of use violations?
So it's for either. So it, it, it governs both the time of use as well as the, the social host component. So the social host is for the illegal, and then the, the time of use is because people still are, are, you know, there's nuisance behind the sounds. So, um, for, it's, it's for both.
Yeah, okay. It just seems a little heavy on the, the time of use, even though, I mean, I can't stand it when people are blowing stuff up still or, or lighting off things, uh, that are, that are legal even after, you know, 12 o'clock. It bothers me definitely. But, uh, it just seems that those two violations, um, um, are definitely two, uh, different things in the level of, um, severity. You know, lighting off stuff that's, you know, flying up in the air and exploding as opposed to lighting off a piccolo Pete at 11:01, um, doesn't seem to be the same kind of, um, uh, severity. And so I don't know if we want to maybe think about a different, um, fine or, or something like that. Just seems to be a little extreme.
So. Pardon me.
Steve, did you have any?
Oh, I was gonna, uh, agree that maybe we should have a smaller fine for the legal fireworks and, and keep the 750 for illegal.
Maybe 250?
Yeah.
First one?
Tim?
So one of the things that I think people need to be cognizant of is that we are, um, we're, we're really, um, sensitive to how many of the nonprofit groups that, uh, use this time to, um, generate income, to, to sell for, uh, to, to raise money for their causes. Um, there are a number of, um, cities that, uh, that I know that don't have any fireworks at all, fireworks completely illegal. Um, and it, it appears that they have less of an issue, uh, with illegal fireworks because there's no fireworks, period. What I would want to s- say to the public is, don't take advantage of our, um, of our sort of generosity and seeing that, that this is, if you can maintain and, and, uh, stay within the guidelines, not light off fireworks after 11:00 PM, then we probably won't consider doing a total ban. Um, but, um, I, I think that, um, personally, I, I think that, uh, that, um, things are a little out of control right now. And, uh, I don't have an issue with, uh, with a heavy fine for, uh, after-hours use.
Jeannie, do you have any comments?
Um, I could go, I could support either. I think our, our greatest focus is on the illegal fireworks. Um, I, I echo, uh, Vice Mayor Schaefer's sentiments. Uh, when I moved up here, uh, from Southern California, fireworks had been illegal for a long time, and I was surprised that they were illegal in Sacramento County. Um, and so I, you know, I could go either way on the, the after 11 o'clock fine. Probably would favor it being a little lighter because it's not as much of a violation as the illegals. But at the same time, if we, um, if we tolerate that portion of the, of the ordinance, then it could, it could lead to even, you know, greater violation of the illegals. So I kind of don't normally go back and forth on the fence. But on this one, I'm definitely supporting the hefty fine on, on the illegals. And I would support a motion either way on the, uh, after 11 o'clock.
Okay. I'll weigh in briefly. I, I think that the fines are appropriate where they are. Um, that, you know, it, it seemed to work out for us better when we did it last year, when we had this kind of emergency ordinance. And it's just a way for folks to know that we are serious about this and just to come out strong and say, hey, these are the guidelines. Everyone follow them. If you want to pop off, you know, legal fireworks after 11, you risk your favorite nonprofit not being able to do, do their work, and you also get a $750 fine. Um, I would, I take it back to the idea, like, when I was a kid, if, you know, if I hit my brother, whether I slapped him or punched him, the punishment was the same, right? Keep your hands to yourself. And I think that keeping it across the board even is, um, the right thing to do.
Yeah, let me just amend my comment, too. I agree, for the sake of consistency, I think we go forward with this permanent ordinance, uh, being consistent with, with the emergency ordinance.
Okay. All right.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, um, that we, uh, move this item with the addition of the time of use violation fine being $250.
Is that for legal?
Yes.
Fireworks?
Yes.
Illegals remain the same?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion by Brett Daniels, second by Miller. Um, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
No.
Councilmember Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
No.
And Mayor Middleton.
No.
And I'd like to offer a substitute motion that we, um, uh, make permanent our temporary ordinance with the same provisions that our temporary ordinance has in place today.
I second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Vice Mayor Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
No.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye. Um, two, three. Motion passes. Uh, next item, please.
Next, we have item number 14. The subject is drive-through facilities discussion. Staff recommendation is to review staff presentation and provide direction to staff for future action.
I think we have it. All right. Uh, thank you, Council, for that delay. Um, Allison Bermuda's here with the Planning Division, uh, leading discussion tonight on drives to, drive-through facilities. This item is brought to you at the request of the council back in January. Am I good? Okay, all right. We're driving, we're in the driver's seat now. So thank you, uh, Council, for having me here on this item. As I mentioned, we're going to be discussing drive-through facilities as a discussion item tonight. There'll be no action, uh, but we'll entertain your discussion, take any direction from you, um, should, at the conclusion you have any, um, thing that you'd like staff to work on or bring back to you later. bring back to you later. We're gonna talk a little bit about background on drive-through facilities in Citrus Heights, how many we have, where they're located, our existing regulations and our process of how they're approved. We'll talk about our documents and our guiding plans that go through the review for drive-throughs when an application for a drive-through facility is considered. We'll talk a little bit about economics in drive-throughs, some trends. We'll talk about land use, how the opportunities and its challenges with siding a drive-through on a property. We'll talk about some options, the pros and cons of each of those options, and then roll into our discussion. This map here shows all of our drive-through locations in the city. There are 70 of them. This map does include all types of drive-throughs. So we're talking about restaurants, that would be food service, coffee services, pharmacies, car washes, and banks. Did you know we had 10 bank drive-throughs? That was pretty significant. Car washes are also listed on here and I just want to talk a little bit about that. As car wash facilities, you may not consider a drive-through. Planning world, we do consider it a drive-through, but this does include car washes that are self-service, but associated with a gas station that you would drive through. It could be a self-service where you drive through and wash it yourself, or it could be some of the automated systems like Quick Quack or Bubba's that we have. So it does include all types of car washes. So we do have 70 of them. And just the circles, just to demonstrate that most of our drive-through facilities are located at our major corridors, our intersections, heavy concentration at Antelope and 80 next to the freeway for obvious reasons, Sunrise and Greenback, and then Auburn and Greenback. Some of our heavy areas are where you'll find numerous drive-throughs. This map shows those 70 locations, but I just wanted to present this to show how many drive-throughs we have and how many have been here well before we became a city. So for, there are 70 locations. Forty-nine of them were here in existence when we incorporated from Sacramento County. Since we have incorporated in 1997, there has been 21 additions. Of those 49 that were here when we incorporated, 27 will consider quick service food. Those would be food services, coffee services with drive-through. And of the 21 that we have approved since cityhood, 16 of them are considered quick service food. That would be your food and coffee with drive-through services. So more than, majority of them were here when we incorporated and became a city and have continued to remain. They may have changed users over time, but they have been consistent. The red stars shown on the map really are those post-incorporation quick service food, just to point those out, thinking that that was maybe more the topic that you wanted to talk about. I just wanted to identify the areas that were the quick service food. We have a variety of existing regulations that regulate drive-throughs, starting with our general plan. Our general plan, as you know, is kind of our over-guiding document as far as development policies. And one policy in the general plan does talk about drive-throughs or what we refer to as auto-intensive services. The policy uses words like discourage the concentration of auto-intensive services, use words compatible, things like that. So while it's not a definite shall policy, doesn't use the word shall or shall not, it really is just a guiding policy and we use that as a guideline and a first step when reviewing an application. The zoning code then is really the nuts and bolts of it. It has the shalls and the shall-nots, the more defined regulations. Our zoning code does require a use permit be reviewed and considered when a drive-through is proposed. Our guidelines or our regulations in the zoning code also discuss the stacking requirements. That's the number of vehicles that the drive-through lane must be able to allow to stack at the order window. And also, the zoning code provides our design requirements for landscaping and screening and all those things that you'd want to conceal or use to mitigate the appearance of a drive-through. So all those currently exist in our zoning code. And then we have three specific plan documents that address drive-throughs in a variety of ways, first being the Auburn Boulevard Plan. It does allow drive-throughs along Auburn Boulevard except, with the exception of the Silver and Corners District. The Silver and Corners District, the guide or the specific plan specifically only allows one drive-through. This would be a standalone service drive-through that currently is in existence. We noticed a Kentucky Fried Chicken, so that fulfills the allowed drive-through in that location. Our Stock Ranch Guide for Development discusses drive-through too and it does allow for one drive-through service. That was presented in the conceptual plan when that specific plan was developed several years ago. While there isn't a drive-through in existence now, it is conceptually planned and it did on your, on the maps that I showed, it did show that location since it is, conceptually could come in down the road. And then the recently adopted Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, it outright prohibits drive-throughs. So a variety of service, a variety of levels of restrictions and guidelines for drive-throughs in our specific plan. The current review process applied to applications for drive-throughs, they do require a use permit. Those are usually done in conjunction with the design review permit. When we review applications for those services, we also have a noise study prepared and a traffic study prepared. We like to be able to review the onsite circulation, ensure that the drive-through doesn't back out into the public roadway. So all those documents, environmental reviews are processed when we consider a drive-through. The Planning Commission serves as the review body of the use permit and the design review permit. They're presented the application at the hearings and details about the project and then their role to make the findings that would either approve the project or deny the project. And then as all planning commission decisions are, they are, their decision is appealable to you, the city council. The findings that are presented really define the rationale or the legal record in making that decision. Our zoning code defines what those findings are. There's a list of them and they must, the planning commission must determine that the project does meet those findings in order to approve the project. In addition, the zoning code does provide a list of findings for the revocation of a permit, something we have not had to thankfully do too often or, but if a permit is issued and situations change, the zoning code does allow, provide our findings should that permit need to be revoked. So there's a lot of words here, but this is really the list of findings that the Planning Commission must review and determine that an application meets in order to approve the project. So you have things that it's consistent with the code, it's consistent with the general plan, the municipal code, it's design, it's operating characteristics are compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses and the site is physically suitable for the use. So those are the common findings and what are required for the use permit. Conversely, as I mentioned, the zoning code does provide findings for revocation, which is a whole laundry list that I didn't bring up, but the main one on the revocation is that if any of the findings that the Planning Commission determined the project met, as shown on the screen, could no longer be met, then the permit is subject to be revocated. On the financial economic side of the project, and this is looking over a five-year period, and this is sales tax revenue from food service. So there's the yellow line being restaurants and of a restaurant or food sales and then the orange line defining quick service. And this quick service, for the purpose of these graphs I'm gonna show you, this does include everything that's considered quick service, so that may or may not have a drive-through. Our data that we get from sales tax collection doesn't specify whether it came from a drive-through service. They classify just quick service, so I just want to make that clarification. My map showed quick service drive-throughs where this one is all quick service.
But how many restaurants are we comparing to?
There is 92? No, I'm sorry, 143, I think. Yeah, I think it's on these slides.
Always the next slide.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
But really what I want to show on this is that you can see over this five-year period, restaurants, you know, remained kind of steady, but then obviously we know in 19 and 20 what happened. They took an obvious dip, started to come back a little bit. This ended in the fiscal year 21. So you saw as things started opening up, they were starting to come back a little bit. But if you look at the quick service, they're pretty much remain consistent. They took a little bit of a dip in 19 and 20, but not nearly as dramatic as restaurants, but have been fairly consistent. The quick service sales, this is sales tax generation, is just over $600,000 pretty consistently versus what about a million five for the other. So over half or just about half of our sales tax in the food industry is coming from quick This is the same data, but it's a little bit shorter timeframe, just so you can see the dramatic changes that the restaurant industry has had, assumably through the pandemic, some very significant dips and kind of a slow trend to rise back up where if you start looking at the quick service, it again stayed pretty consistent over the shorter period of time. But this was interesting. This looks at per-location, so this shows that Citrus Heights has 94. This is the quick service locations, that we have 94. And each of those locations, what it generated in sales tax over this period per location. And if you compare our numbers to our surrounding neighbors, Roseville, Rancho, you can see that our locations do provide a greater sales tax revenue per location than the surrounding areas. So we have 94 facilities that were identified through this data, each one generating about $23,000 in sales tax, obviously the highest. Roseville, our neighbor, with 251 locations is not at the $20,000 mark. Now, obviously they have more choices, so that numbers are spread out, but it's just to kind of give you an idea that our locations are generating a significant amount of sales Briefly talk about the trends that we've seen in drive-throughs that we've been reading about through our publications. Many of the operational changes that came about over this pandemic are probably here to stay. A significant change has probably been in the delivery service. DoorDash, Uber Eats, I think that's here to stay. You see a lot more curb-side pickup for those services. People have grown accustomed to them through pandemic and found that they liked them, so I think that's here to stay. Some other trends, there's, some of the chains are introducing their restaurants and they're mobile order only, so you don't go in and dine, you don't go in and order, you order through your phone and you drive through and pick up the food. One opened, there's one in Roseville, so very close nearby, one in Sacramento. So this is also an emerging type of food service in the industry. I did receive a call yesterday from our McDonald's franchisee, if you know Mr. Aristibin. He shared with me that 80% of his sales are coming through the drive-through, 15% are in through the delivery service. So that's quite a significant number, though that was surprising. And he's only, having 5% of his sales are coming in through the dining room. And then based upon that information, as you can imagine, many fast food chains are phasing out or reducing their size of their dining rooms. They want to provide more lanes for the drive-through, allow for more curb-side pickup. One of the designs shown in the publication we had was to conserve land, they created their dining room above the drive-through lane, so basically it was a two-story. The ground level was the drive-through lanes and then the small dining room was on top of the drive-through canopies.
So one of the things that we wanted to discuss with the council is the opportunity costs associated with, with drive-throughs. As you can see here, this image shows a site as a drive-through, then a site as a mixed-use building. So you can see the footprint of the drive-through is, is small in terms of building, but when you add up the amount of space necessary for queuing, it really is not that efficient of a use of the space. So there are some practical considerations when, when looking at these, you know, once you have a drive-through in place, it's likely to be there for a very long time, which may reduce the ability for nearby properties to, to redevelop or become something more than just a drive-through. It may be challenging to locate a mixed-use or residential building next to an existing drive-through because of the noise and traffic associated with that. So as we see these come in, we do have that opportunity cost that once they come in, it makes it more difficult for, for something different to come, come forward. So more on the opportunities and constraints, our challenges associated with drive-throughs is, yes, they provide tax generation, they may not provide as much tax generation, tax generation as a similar use or a, sorry, a different use, a mixed-use may provide more property tax, less sales tax and vice versa. Yes, they will provide jobs, but generally they're lower paying, lower wage jobs. Opportunities is clearly from the data you've seen, there's a customer base here that are willing to, to go to the drive-throughs and frequent our drive-throughs. Have you seen in social media, there's a community perception that there is a lot of drive-throughs here and so that's out there as well. Opportunities for drive-throughs, they are convenient for mobility challenge in families. I know having kids, it is easier to go through there and not have to get them into the restaurant. But also the, the impact of cars idling there as opposed to turning their engines off does have some air quality impacts and noise impacts associated with them.
So Mayor, can I comment?
Please, go ahead.
So, thanks Casey. So here's the thing that while I, I gotta tell you, I'm a big fan of Raising Canes. I love that restaurant. I love their food. I think it's great. The challenge that we're faced with is you have some of the, some drive-throughs are really, really popular. You're talking about In-N-Out, Chick-fil-A. These are, these are restaurants that are, that are really, really popular and they do have a lot of cars parked in the queue there that could potentially create a problem. The problem is, we have to treat everyone the same. We can't say, well, if you want to put a Chick-fil-A there, we have to have a special rule for you. This has to be a sort of ambiguous, fair approach to this. So as we're discussing this, it's really hard to sort of, you know, hey, look, how do we look, like, for example, when we look, I've been to a, to a Raising Canes restaurant before many times and it was always crazy busy there. And I was excited when Citrus Heights came, when, when they came to Citrus Heights. But I was, and I was actually really surprised, even I was really surprised, even though I saw the restaurant down at Costa Mesa, I was really surprised that it was really so, still so popular here. So that's, and that's really, I would say that that's, that's the, the one restaurant sort of brought this whole issue to mind for me. And, and mostly it was people that were reaching out to me and saying, hey, you know, I want to avoid Greenback Lane and Birdcage because of the, of the traffic issue there. So it's, it's, this is a frustrating, difficult thing to, to sort of wrap your head around and say, okay, how do we manage this better?
Vice Mayor, if you would, don't mind if I could, like, if we could finish the presentation?
Oh, sorry.
And we can really get into a deep discussion.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, so based upon all that information, there are a number of options that you may want to consider or discuss tonight. One, you know, we could remain status quo, move forward as we are. We could modify our current, our current regulations. We could define, define spacing requirements, not let them be within a certain distance of each other. We do that for uses like alcohol and some smoking paraphernalia establishments. So that is something we have done before. We could limit hours if noise or something like that was a concern. We could not allow 24-hour operations. There's a variety of methods we could use to increase screening and change the stacking requirements. And we could also have all applications for drive-throughs come to you instead of go to Planning Commission for review and recommendation and then come to you for final approval. So there's a variety of modifications we could make in that area. We could also consider or possibly regulate drive-through by location or modify our zoning. One method that could be used is create an overlay zone. This is like a second layer of zoning that's put on a property. This is like a second layer of zoning that's put on a property. So our standard zoning would apply, but then in certain areas, this overlay zone would maybe provide more refinement. We do this along Sunrise Boulevard where we have that corridor overlay zone. Those properties are still zoned residential, but we have this corridor overlay that could be used. So we could have an approach like that in certain areas. And then we, or you could also define areas where you would want no more or reduce the number, things like that, or not allow any additional in certain areas. That could be one method. And then to the extreme, we could do the ban or moratorium. Should that method be chosen, we'd have to really talk about that and get into the nuts and bolts of what the basis for that would be. Typically, air quality, health, or greenhouse gases would support something like that. With each of those options, there are obviously some pros and cons to each, to each method. Remaining status quo, you know, it's obviously something that we're familiar with. We can move forward. We know how that process works. Projects can be reviewed, they have to be approved by the planning commission, they're appealable to you. So that's kind of the pro to that. But, you know, the reverse to that is that it would continue to allow and increase the number of drive-throughs should that be a concern. We could modify the regulations. I presented some of them to you tonight, talk about screening, hours, spacing, kind of define some more stringent regulations. And then the cons, kind of, I think where council member Schaefer was going, may not reduce all the impacts because you don't know the user. So you can modify the regulations, but you may not catch them all. Restrict locations, the pros, you know, that would, we could get into the weeds and the nuts and bolts of where we would want to refine those restrictions. On the con to that, it would limit property owners, you know, ability to develop their property. And the moratorium, that's a temporary fix. Last, you know, it's a short period of time, and it has come with a kind of a negative connotation. And then outright ban, which would, you know, eliminate any new drive-throughs. Again, it would be permanent and will reduce property owners' ability to develop. So I know I threw a lot of stuff at you, and you'll probably have a lot of questions. I'm happy to answer, but we'll discuss it, answer questions. And then, as I mentioned, this is just a discussion item, no action tonight. But whatever you decide, or you want to come back with any additional information, we're happy to do that and come back at a future meeting.
Okay. We will start with Ms. Burin, since she's not sitting right here with us. I want to give the opportunity to.
Thank you. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So I have one question for you, Allison, and that is, when you were comparing the sales tax dollars with the other communities, one of the things I heard you say, I believe, was that our sales tax was averaged over 92 locations, 92 facilities. Is that correct?
Yes, 94.
94. But does that include all the other non-food operations that don't generate sales tax?
I know this is just quick service food. So quick service food and coffee. But this would include those services that may or may not have a drive-through. So Chipotle would be considered quick service, but it, here it doesn't have a drive-through. That would be.
Got it.
That would be included in this one.
Okay. So, so we had, you said 94, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then on the table one, you show 42 quick service food services with the drive-through facilities.
Correct. These are the ones we could determine were only with.
Right.
With drive-throughs.
Okay. So, so then, is it, so then we have as many and a few more quick service food restaurants that don't have drive-throughs. We have more that don't than do, but it's almost 50/50. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, if you want to take, consider 94, were considered quick service.
Yeah.
And 43 had drive-throughs.
Okay. All right. That was just, at first I wasn't getting that 94. Now I've got it. Okay. So my thoughts, I had a lot of different thoughts on this. First of all, I, you know, I, I think we want to take a look at, as we, as we consider this in the future, our overall messaging to business development in Citrus Heights. And that is that we have historically, and I think going forward, have committed to being a business-friendly community where it's easy to open up a business and that we have a cooperative method of doing that. And I've heard that from many, many businesses in the community that have opened up over the years, that doing business in Citrus Heights is so much easier than it is in so many other communities in any kind of business, not just food service. So my, my, one of my thoughts is that we don't, I want to be, we need to be careful that we don't put into play programs, practices, and ordinances that diminish our, our reputation for being a business-friendly community where it's easy to open a, a business. And so I am, I am typically in favor of, of less restrictions than more restrictions. And what are the, as I go through the, the possible impacts of changes, I just want to make sure that as we discuss this going forward, we keep in mind that these changes may or may not have an impact on, on the concerns for the, the traffic control of, of drive-through restaurants. One being limiting time, because I, I would venture to say that those that are open 24 hours a day or late into the night don't have the greatest traffic during those times. So if we were to limit them by making them close earlier, it's really not going to solve our problem. And so that, I want to make sure that that's an example of what we need to think about as we go forward with discussing any limitations. The second thing I, I'd like to note is, I purposefully didn't go through Raising Canes until much later because of the traffic situation. My son and grandsons sat in line for an hour to get chicken. And so I chose not to do that, waited till the volume declined. And as I drive, drive past it on Greenback, almost on a daily basis, it, my observation is that the, the rush of business that they saw in the beginning has settled into a more reasonable flow of traffic. So the problems that were experienced during the first two or three or four weeks it was open, because of the novelty of it, and I'm sure the anticipation of getting this popular chain in Citrus Heights, that dissipated. And I, I think going forward, I'd like to still kind of pay attention, maybe even do a little bit of our own study is to see whether or not this volume of traffic maintains stability. And, and so, so I'm just throwing out my general ideas. I'd like to see what staff is going to offer us going forward. But I'm of the, right now, I'm kind of of the frame of mind that we not overreact to something that was a single event in time. And that we be cautious and make sure that we don't make decisions that are going to have a negative impact on businesses wanting to come to Citrus Heights in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Brett, do you have anything?
Sure. You know, when we were growing up, we went outside and we played, or we did sports and stuff like that, and we came home at 5 o'clock and mom had dinner ready. And it was just the way it was. You just had dinner ready. And, and that's all changed now. You know, everybody's on the go, 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 go. The kids are in sports, ballet after school, just go, go, go. And America wants things fast, and they don't necessarily want to, or, or even are capable of taking the time to have mom and hopefully dad also jump in and, and make dinner and get homework done and all of these things, and, and, and do it in a reasonable way every night. So they want options. They want options. And the market has responded too by, and I'm not a champion of fast food, but it's not just junk food. The, you know, the market has responded with, you know, much better quality foods and stuff like that, especially towards kids. You know, please feed your kids at home if you can, and you don't have anything going on, sit down and have dinner. But they want options. And so the commercial market has responded. I'm actually surprised that we've only put up 16 fast, what do you call it, fast?
Quick service.
Quick service.
Quick service.
Quick service in 25 years. I'm kind of shocked. I thought we did a whole lot more than that over the last 25 years. And then the other thing is, I think we just need to wipe out gas stations or car washes and banks from, from our discussion here. I don't think that was our issue at all. I think we just need to focus on what the concern was, and that was quick service, drive-throughs mainly and stuff like that. But not only that, but there is also a large and growing population that simply wants to have their food brought to them. You know, they've got all the time in the world, they want to sit in front of the TV or their computers or whatever, or they're working. You know, a lot of people with COVID and changes on where we work, we work at home. But we still just, some of us don't like to cook. I love to cook, but a lot of people don't. And so DoorDash and Uber Eats, extremely popular. I mean, just very, very popular. I don't understand paying somebody to bring you your food. I don't think I've ever done it once, but I, but man, a ton of people are doing it. And so the market has responded, and it's thriving. And I was trying to think of, do we have any vacant, quick food, whatever places? And the only one I could think of was the Burger King that closed, and they were going to do something else with it, and McDonald's put the kibosh, and it's sitting there like ready to go. I don't know what's going on, but it's ready, it's, that's the only one I could think of off the top of my head.
And that's actually filled with a California burrito.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and, and that's in the whole city, the whole entire city. And then I thought, well, Burger King and Popeyes just did their thing over on Greenback Lane, and they literally both opened up at the same time. And they weren't new, they weren't like, you know, oh my God, it's Raising Canes or whatever. But I don't remember any problems of these two restaurants right next to each other with drive-throughs having issues. And so I think if we do anything with this, really, and Jeannie said something about, I don't know if that solves our problem. Well, I don't know what our problem is really. And if we're concerned about vehicle traffic and lanes and stuff like that, I would say that's a very valid concern. And we would definitely need to make sure that any design does not allow for any kind of stacking that causes cars to back up. I can tell you one problem area right, is Madison and 80 with In-N-Out and, and the other place, the chicken place. It's horrible. It's dangerous. It's dangerous, and it was stupid to let them do that. And so, but I don't think we need, we would necessarily face that kind of an issue. We're literally a built-out city. You know, I don't know where we would put the next McDonald's or, or the next Burger King and stuff like that. But there may be some limited opportunities out there. And then the last thing I would want to do is squelch some developers' ideas about doing something that is obviously beneficial to the city. When you show us those tax numbers, that's huge. That is huge for what we do in the city. And so I think we should just tread very lightly about what we're doing here. And I'm concerned that, again, we may be looking for a solution or, or a problem with a solution. So that would, that would be my comments. I don't know that we have a problem. I don't know that we need a solution. But if we do, let's be very careful and definitely not signal to the business world that, you know, you might want to not buy property in Citrus Heights because they just may end up changing how they let you develop it. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I thought it was pretty impressive, not only with Raising Canes opening week, but rallies. I mean, there was, I went by to, you know, figuring, oh, I'll see, I'll check them both out. But I waited a month because I don't wait an hour to see what it tastes like. And I was over at Lowe's, and I saw there was no line, line at Raising Canes, and it's pretty good. It's pretty darn good. Anyway, having said that, you know, my, I have a bigger concern about backing traffic up onto Auburn Boulevard, and that's the Costco with the gasoline. And that was a rare thing, just like opening week where gas prices are shooting up and everybody's running over to Costco to get a little less expensive gas, and it backs up onto Auburn. Now, to their credit, Costco got out, got out there and did something about it. In fact, I got in the wrong, wrong line and ended up in the gas station, and I didn't want to go there because of the way they'd done their lineage. But having said that, there are always issues like this. And public perceptions, bases what, what's really going on. I mean, I saw comments like, why are we just getting chicken and burger places? Well, because we all show up and buy burgers and chicken. It's demographics. And why the heck are they putting a Raising Canes where there's so much traffic already? Well, that's what they look for. And, and, and you see the patterns of our, our most busiest intersections. In fact, around Raising Canes kind of surprised me how little there is compared to Antelope and 80 and Sunrise and, and Auburn. So anyway, I, I agree with Jeannie and Brett that we can't be talking about being a business-friendly city and then turn around and talk about moratoriums on how they conduct their businesses. So if we were to do anything, I would support a little more work on circulation, these private property, these retail centers. It's one of the worst things. I mean, they're planning for circulation sometimes, leaves, leaves a little, little bit to be desired, even, even if we tell them. So I, I think a harder look at that. You know, I don't think we could have anticipated the backups out of the Costco gas station. They want to add three pumps there. And, but that's a business decision, and they're running, as long as it doesn't make it unsafe on our city streets, I, I support it. So yeah, I, I think we should look more at circulation when we're, we're doing these. I think the planning commission does a great job. I don't think we need to be looking over their shoulders on these. When the property allows, when our zoning allows for this type of business, I, I, denying that is, is just unacceptable to me. So that's where I am for right now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schaefer.
Well, I kind of said my piece a little earlier, and what I would say is, I, I, I think that, that it's reasonable to have a policy in place. That's all I'm saying. I, I'm not saying that I don't want anybody to get the perception that we're not friendly to business, but we also have community members, and we want to listen to the community. And the listen community, the community is reaching out to me saying they don't like this, this is crazy. I feel it's my responsibility to bring it forward, and that's what I've done.
Okay. My remarks. We have to remember that this is, this is private property, right? The city doesn't own it, so we really have to follow some guidelines there. I'm reluctant to have the city get really down to the nuts and bolts in telling business how and where they should be operating. It just, it doesn't sit right. We, as a city, as a council, we know what it's like to get, you know, unfunded mandates from the state. We know what it's like to have people telling us what to do. And for us to go back and do the same thing to our businesses makes us no better, in my opinion. But I also want to make sure that, like, there's some areas that I'm really concerned about, like the old Rite Aid, right up the street from me, or the Marie calendars. You know, I don't want to see in that shopping area, it turns to some type of drive-through. I don't think that that's a good fit. But I do have good faith in our planning commission and, and city staff to make sure that the right things will be put there to make sure that economic development in our city continues to grow, and we don't squelch on bills and businesses either.
If there are no other, Steve?
Oh, you know, I did see complaints about traffic and stuff on social media, but officially, for the record, I only got one email, and they were against the moratorium. I, I've only heard from one citizen.
Yeah.
Directly. And so I think it's much to do about nothing.
Yes, sir. Do you have the direction that you need?
I think I got a direction. Everything?
Perfect.
We're good. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, where are we now?
Next, we have consent calendar. We have item number 10. The subject is approval of the final subdivision map and subdivision improvement agreement for citrus plate subdivision. And the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the final subdivision map and subdivision improvement agreement for citrus plates, citrus plate subdivision.
And Haley, the only questions I had, we got an email this afternoon with an amended, saying it was amended. I don't know what was amended. I, I read the whole thing, and I wasn't going to read it again and start comparing. Could we get a brief update on what those minor changes were?
Yeah, yes. I'd be happy to do that, Councilmember Miller and members of the council. So what happened was the, the developer who's looking to do the work has had a delay in getting the performance bonds. They said they need about a week because the person who's related to do that is out of town this week. of town this week. We normally don't want you to approve this unless the performance bonds are in hand. So what we did is we added language that said, "This is conditioned upon us getting the performance bonds by April 22nd." So we're going to give them until next Friday to perform, and then these, this, the action you're taking tonight would actually fully be executed. So it's, it's a, it's a cover of the city's situation, yeah.
Perfect. Then I'll move the item.
Second. Close, Ryan. That was close.
Before we take a vote. That was so close. If we could have like red-line comparisons next time, just so we can kind of quickly go through and see what has changed, that would be really helpful. But roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next, we have consent calendar, item number 11. The subject is amendment, business license ordinance, short-term rental, second reading. Staff recommendation is to adopt ordinance number 2022-003, amending chapter 22 and chapter 86 of the municipal code and adding section 22-451 through 22-460 regarding short-term rentals.
Just a separate vote.
Oh, okay. Roll call, please.
Where is she going?
Oh, I'm sorry.
She'd need a motion and I'll, I'll move.
You know what? I'm not a, you know, stickler for the rules, but fine. I, I need a motion, please.
I, I move the item.
Dr. [inaudible].
Motion by Miller, second by Bruins. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton?
Aye. 4-1. Next item, please.
Next item, we have city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Ashley Feeney, city manager, with some good news tonight. And I actually brought it with me. Casey, I promise, well, I better be careful. I'm going to try really hard not to drop this award. We have a trophy tonight. So Sunrise tomorrow, the plan that the council approved, that the staff team worked so hard with the council and the community to bring forward, received an award this week. And Casey Kempner, our Community Development Director, received that award. It was issued by the Association of Environmental Planners, and it was Award of Merit for an outstanding planning document for this year, 2022, for Sunrise Tomorrow Plan. And nice-looking award and a lot to be proud of here, so I wanted to bring this for the council. And that concludes my announcements this evening.
That's great.
That's great news. Next item.
Next, you have items requested by council members or in future agenda items.
Jeannie, do you have anything?
Nope.
No? Nothing?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just want to commend the council for us being able to have four-to-one votes, three-to-two votes, two-to-three votes, and, and do it all in a very respectful and cordial way. I think that's the way it should be. You know, we don't all have to agree on everything, but we all have to work together, so I just wanted to say that. And then I wanted to commend the, the acting city clerk, Haley Reed, for doing an incredible job tonight. Good job.
Thank you.
Well, if that is all, we are adjourned.